Good morning.
Good morning.
All right, I didn't scare you off. Very good. Good to see you all. So if you have your Bible, you're gonna have to have your Bible with you. Just thought we'd start with the first Psalm. Psalm one. And just to kind of set a tone and test for our time today. And we are gonna be talking about, kind of still in the over part in a way, but also, you and I, and living in a world, you know, if you walk up here, right, you gotta walk past security people from the church, right? One of the security guys is talking about, it's a shame, right, that we have to have security, right? That's because there's evil in the world. We're gonna talk a little bit about that today, because we have to know a little bit about who our enemy is. But one of my favorite of the Psalms is Psalm one. And for me, there's just a lot in here, we're not gonna make our teaching about this today, but there is something about here about what is good and what is evil. Psalm one, "Pleasant is the man who walks not in the counsel of the wicked, nor stands in the way of sinners, nor sits in the seat of mockers. He has the life and the law of the Lord, and on his law he meditates both day and night. He is like a tree planted by streams of water, that yields its fruit and its season, and its leaf does not wither. In all that he does, he prospers. The wicked? Uh-uh, not so. But are like the chaff that where the wind drives away. Therefore, the wicked will not stand in the judgment, nor the sinners in the congregation of the righteous. For the Lord knows the way of the righteous, but the way of the wicked will perish." So in this, we have, when we study Scripture, we have the great compare contrast. So we're comparing, what does it mean to be a blessed man, and what does it mean to be a wicked man? And notice at the very beginning, there are three postures that are mentioned. And so he talks about, he starts off and he says, "There are those who we are not to walk in the counsel of the wicked, nor we to stand in the way of the sinners, and we are not to sit in the seat of scoffers." Now, do you notice the process there? Do you notice where he goes and where he leads us? At first, we're walking, and then we stand, and then we sit. So, you know how temptation works? Right? Temptation works that way. So first, we're kind of walking along and we see something, and then we stand a little bit too long and have conversation. And before we know it, we are sitting with those who are the mockers, who are the slanderers, right? And we talked a little bit last week, one of the names of the evil ones that we have to deal with, guess what? Are the slanderers. Are the accusers. And so right here, Psalm one starts off with this idea of, it happens very easy how we get into those things. But yet, blessed is the man who is like a tree who is planted by streams of water, right? His leaves nether wither and his fruit, and he prospers, right? And one more part of this, we're gonna get on this a little bit later, but is this. "And he meditates on God's word both day and night." See the juxtaposition? The juxtaposition is walking, and standing, and sitting with those who are evil, but it's being planted with God, and receiving from God over and over again, so that we would be protected and that we would be prosperous. Isn't that cool to think about? Isn't that? Let's pray. "We thank you, O Lord, you are most high and a glorious God. You sit on your throne, and the earth is your quibble. Thank you, Lord, that we could gather together to talk about, in a way, this wonderful world that you have created. And we know and recognize there are so many things, what's going on around us, that we don't even comprehend or even understand. And so we just ask for your guidance today. May your Holy Spirit work within us, help us to have a greater understanding of your Word and your nature. And Lord, we also ask for your protection from the evil one, so that our hearts and our minds will be guarded. And so bless us today as we learn from you, O Lord. In the name of Christ, we pray." Amen? All right. Okay, so you have a handout this week, and I don't think we've got the one uploaded, though the video went out, I think on Tuesday this week, and I assume Friday this week, this will go up too. So if you missed, or wanna share it with someone, I know there's a number of people have contacted this week who are like, "I'm on fall break, gonna be traveling," and all that. And so everyone will be able to catch up with that. Okay, first one, I want to go back to our outline real quick. So we're on week two. So this is the introduction in terms. Today, we're gonna talk about heaven and earth. We're gonna talk about, all right, spiritual warfare. So guess what? We have to figure out what is spiritual and what is physical. We gotta figure out what that is. And then three is the Old Testament and the levels of rebellion and warfare. And so next week, a lot of times you and I think about spiritual warfare, we think of Jesus, you know, demonic people and stuff, but trust me, in the Old Testament, there is a lot of spiritual warfare on a massive scale, and we will talk about that next week. Four is New Testament, Jesus and disciples. And then fifth is, we're gonna talk about a little bit of church history, and we're also going to have a speaker talk about Mormonism. And so we're gonna talk about the last 150 years of the church, and how we got to where we are, and some of these topics. And then the last one will be spiritual warfare today, tools and practices with all them. And with each session, we will make sure we leave enough time for questions at the end, so if you have questions, so you can write them on your paper, if you like, your journals, and then we can try and hit to those last ones. I did wanna answer one question from last week. So we had the wonderful question about watching, bless you, watching like horror movies and stuff like that, and I said, "Well, I watch with my kids when we watch certain movies." Now, I wanna say, these weren't eight-year-olds. They're my 17 and 18-year-olds sitting back here, and so they're a lot older and mature and able to handle those conversations. Though I do know a certain family member who allowed their child to watch horror movies at five. And so, yeah, it's kind of crazy with all that. Anyway, Psalm one, the main concept we brought up last week, and is important in our conversation, is this Scripture versus tradition. And this, in this area of theology and Scripture and understanding God's Word, this is a huge one to understand, because as we kind of preempted last week, right, is that there are a lot of things that you and I grew up perhaps to believe, like who Satan is, what the spiritual warfare is, and those terms and ideas actually are not really biblical, they have come through tradition. So, real quick quiz, if you paid attention last week, where do we get the image that Satan is tall and has horns and a little beard? Remember? What? Greek mythology, which one? Pan. Excellent job, yes. That all comes from Pan and Greek mythology, has nothing to do with Scripture whatsoever. But you'll have to see a lot of this next couple weeks, because we're coming up on Halloween. And I was trying to think, since we are this time of year, if we may wanna get to that point of asking some questions about Halloween, because it's also an area that is fraught with misinformation about Halloween as well. Okay. So Francis Schaeffer, and so Francis Schaeffer was a pastor, evangelist, philosopher, theologian, really came on the scene in the 1950s, 60s, 70s. And so he started a group called Le Brie, which is French and means shelter. And so he really helped those within the church come to understand about biblical theology and worldview, and helped us to think differently about the world around us. Actually, Francis Schaeffer, who died in, I think, 1986, is actually part of the reason why my family and I come to Rockland. So we were looking for a church, and we came on a Sunday morning, and Seth had just started a new series, and there was this picture of Francis Schaeffer up on the script, like, "Maybe we found our home." So we're big Francis Schaeffer fan, have a lot of love for him. But he says this. "The nature of evil is defined by its contrast to the objective moral standard provided by personal and infinite God. He saw evil not as a mere lack of goodness, but as corruption and rebellion against a standard that is grounded in God's character, which is revealed in Scripture and in human conscience. This contrast with modern views that see evil as subjective, a social construct, or as a result of a meaningless universe." Now, we don't have time to really ponder all that, but that's some good stuff right there. So you and I, watching the news, and we see deaths and horrible things happen, right? Why do they do these things? Well, he throws out a key here, that evil is subjective. So we think about their parents, or we think about their culture, we think about those type things. We also think about the social construct. So what's happening tomorrow, hopefully, is 28 hostages, right, are gonna be released tomorrow, hopefully. Now, how did they get there in the first place? Well, they got there because of a social construct, and one of those is Hamas, right? How does someone get into that? It's a social construct. Or a meaningless universe, right? So what that means is, it goes back to Nietzsche, which is our views and our ideas of ourselves, that we are the ones who have power and control, and so therefore, we look at the world around us, and it's realistic, which means nothing actually has meaning, and so everything is meaningless. So, if you knew this, over years ago, England had to appoint a minister of loneliness, because it had so many people who were being overwhelmed with depression, that they literally had to get, because it had so many suicides taking place, okay? So it's a part of that meaninglessness. So let's take a moment, as you and I believers, let's talk about what is evil. So first of all, evil deals with evil and rebellion, and rebellion's gonna be a key word today in understanding those within the spiritual realm, and even in our own hearts, what is rebellion, right? So rebellion means that there is a standard, there is a truth, and someone chooses not to listen to that. Now, if you have raised a two-year-old, you know what rebellion looks like, right? And when I have a young couple who have a two-year-old as their first child, they're like, "Oh, this is so rough." And me and my encouraging mate are saying, "Oh no, wait till they get to be three." Then we call them terrible titties, because they never experience the threes, right? It's the ultimate in rebellion, is that three. Now, because of what happens in Genesis three, you and I live in a fallen world. Disease, hurricanes, all kinds of horrible things that happen in this world. Part of that is because of what happens in Genesis three and the fallenness of this world. And then, we can't escape our own responsibility, our own fleshly desires, the things that we want, right? Okay, back to the two and three-year-olds. When they stand there defiantly, or you go into the store, and some kid's laying on the ground, throwing a tantrum, right? "I want what I want," in that. And the reality is, all of us have that fleshly desire, all of us have to wrestle with that. Okay. Now, we need to do an over story of a big story of the arching views within Scripture. Now, this is hugely important because of the hope that we want to have. So one of the theological ideas of understanding the gospel and understanding the art of God's story is creation, fall, restoration. Now, and depending on what denominational background, they all change the last word. So today, we're gonna use either restoration, renewal, or glorification. Obviously, it means the same thing for our conversation today. But think about this, so God creates, and then there is a fall, and then God finds a way to restore it, all with the hope of what he is going to do in humanity. And you follow that story all through the Old Testament, and obviously through the New Testament, and this is where you and I are, right? We focus on the creation of God, which, living in Indiana, is gonna get a lot of fun here in the next three weeks. Beautiful colors everywhere. My son's girlfriend has never experienced the fall, she lived in Wyoming. So it just goes from summer to winter. They already had snow then, right? And so she is so excited about seeing all the colors and all that, right? Creation, and then we recognize how everything falls and falls apart, but how Christ is there, right, to restore us and to make us new. And we have a hope that someday, we don't know when that is, someday, everything is gonna become new again. Okay. Now, so we're gonna talk about this unseen world, we're gonna talk about this between the physical and the spiritual nature. Okay, so you know Seth and I, so Seth and I, there has to be a movie conversation, all right? So today's movie, I'm not gonna show you a clip from it, but today's movie, oh, aww, thank you. It was gonna take too long, I didn't have enough time. But it is a pretty movie, but some of you wouldn't like it, it's very violent. But it is one of the best movies, and thinking about the topic today, about spiritual warfare, and the difference between what is physical and what is spiritual, and the temptation of the idea, and it is called The Matrix. Have you ever seen The Matrix? Okay? It was a great movie, I think it's like 27 years old now, right? At least, something like that. Keanu Reeves. Let me set it up for you. So you meet Neo, who is Keanu Reeves, who you see in the glasses. And so he's just this guy, does computers and stuff, and then all of a sudden, all these weird things start to happen, and all of a sudden, he meets Morpheus, okay? I mean, for those who haven't seen the movie, well, I just killed off like 25 minutes. And so, of the movie. So he meets Morpheus, and Morpheus sits with him, and he says, "There is something more here than you even realize, and I am here to offer you this opportunity to leave this world and to embrace another whole world, but it has to be your choice." And the famous scene in Matrix is, he sits there, and you can see it a little bit in the glasses, there's Morpheus in his glasses, and there's a red and a blue pill. He can choose one pill and stay his normal life, but if he chooses the other pill, he's gonna be able to understand what's really going on. And so he takes that pill, and when he does, all this transformation takes place, and what he basically finds out is this, is that the world that we live in is all made up by computers, AI. And so everything is created in a way, and this is the gross part, real humans are only used as batteries, like we're in these like battery cages, and they're sucking the energy out of us, and then they throw us away, okay? But in this world, they are all trying to get to a place where there is peace, where the computers no longer rule, and that humanity is restored. It's the whole premise of the movie. So then, and again, it's very violent, because they're fighting against the agents who are trying to keep them from the computers, trying to keep them from restoring all things. Well, the end of the movie, Neo goes through this horrible thing, and literally has a part where he is beaten up, and then he dies, and a character named Trinity kisses him, and he comes back to life and has like new powers, and he kicks the bad guy's guts all over the place. And at the end, the very last scene of the movie, Neo, which stands for new man, ascends off the earth. Death, burial, resurrection, ascension, all in the last couple minutes of the movie. It's pretty cool. But for our purposes today is this. Neo, the reason why, one of the reasons this movie was popular, is because what it meant was, this world that we live in is actually not the true world, but there is another world, and that world is real. Now, in this case, the world he wants to go to is ravaged, and they're having to run away from people. But for you and I, that world is beautiful and incredible, it was made by a wonderful creator, and Jesus is actually working on that now for us. C.S. Lewis, okay, I gotta add, movie reference, and Lewis, check, check. So now Seth, now it's to say I did a good job, because I did this. So again, no John Wayne references today. C.S. Lewis believed in dualistic reality, consisting of both the material and the spiritual realms. He saw the spiritual realm as a higher dimension that transcends the physical world, okay? Now, I don't know, little story about Narnia, four children who are taken to another world, which is like another real world, right? If you read Magician's Nephew, there's all these other worlds, but there is one where the emperor lives, who is Aslan's father, and Aslan is the one who creates, Aslan is the one who redeems all of us. And Lewis, right, in this view, that there are two different worlds, plays on that through the Narnia stories. Okay. Now, in this picture, this isn't actually the creation and Eden story, but I did wanna show this a way of what's going to happen later. Okay, when we think of the Garden of Eden, first two chapters of Genesis, I don't know what's in your head, but I remember all that, okay, for us older ones, the flannel grass, right? The flannel grass of Eden, okay? And so we have to think of Eden differently. Eden is on a mountain, okay? And it is beautiful, and God's word, did he say it was perfect? He said it was good. That's all your conversation today, it is good. So Eden is on a mountain, and it is beautiful, and it is good. There is a river that comes out of it, and there are two trees in the garden, good and evil, and the tree of life, right? Tree of knowledge, good and evil, and the tree of life, right? Now, speaking of restoration, if we jump in our minds to Revelation, and when we go to heaven, what is there? There is a river, and there is the tree of life, and it is beautiful. So the last three chapters of Revelation mirror the first three chapters of Genesis. Isn't that cool? Why? Creation, fall, redemption, restoration, right? It's all part of God's plan. So there's a mountain, there's a sacred river, and there is the presence of God. What do we see God doing? "After Adam and Eve descend, and they are covered in shame," what are they doing? God is walking in the cool of the day. We get to do that now, right? Temperature's changed, we go out in the evening, it's in the cool of the day. His presence. "Adam and Eve, where are you? Where are you, Adam and Eve?" But they're used to walking together. And before the fall, there is the innocence of man. Again, think about our restoration as we get to experience innocence again. Wouldn't that be nice? Pure innocence, right? Okay. And all of it. So we think about this convergence, that the heavenly realms, right? You have to think from a Jewish perspective here, there were three levels of kind of when they referred to heavens. There was the sky, it was like space, and then there were godless, okay? And so in this, the spiritual realm and the physical realm literally comes together and connects on earth as Eden, okay? This is God's special place where he meets his people, and it's this beautiful coming around, where spiritual beings and physical beings literally are coexisting in the same space. You with me? That's what Eden is about. All right, now, when we think about humanity, well, we got a little, hold on, there's a little video here, I mean, turn it up. I did have video, Adam, I lied. Whoa, sorry. It's the rapture! That was my fault, my fault, I totally forgot. Let's see if we can get this up there. So last week, hell, I was shocked, yeah. All right. Okay, I promise you, when it comes to evil, that was not Satan, that was me. It was my own fault on this, trust me. All right, now we're gonna go back on this. So remember last week, I told you about Sam Mackey and Bible Project, who watched a little bit of this? And this is from the Bible Project, and helping to explain this reality. Oh, now we have no sense. I don't, I think Adam did that one. We'll find out. He's looking at me, shaking his head, he's like, "I just wanna identify with you, Mark, and even, I wanna go down to the darkness with you and help him come out." Yes, no?
I don't know.
All right, we can come back to that. Oh, I was playing.
Not getting audio yet.
We can always go back to it.
Okay. Let me work on it.
And there, they're all called signs, meaning that their powers symbolize.
There we go. All right, so we go back to the beginning. There we go.
People have believed in some kind of spiritual realm that exists alongside the world we know it.
Right, and the biblical authors are no exception.
Yeah, for them, the spiritual realm is a different kind of realm than ours. And to highlight that difference, the Bible refers to God's face as the sky or the heavens.
Because the sky is truly different from the land, it's above and beyond, and up there are shiny bodies that move around. I think of these as flaming assholes.
But when the biblical authors looked up, the stars gave them a way to talk and think about spiritual people. In the Bible, they're called the sons of God, or the rulers and authorities, or even sometimes the divine council.
So that sounds really important. What does the divine council mean?
Well, they're introduced in Genesis chapter one, where they're called the host of heaven, that is, the sun movement starves. And there, they're also called signs, meaning that their power and status symbolizes and points to God's power and status.
Yeah, so Genesis one, God points them to rule over the day, right?
Exactly. And then later in the Bible, we're told that they were celebrating God's power and creativity when he created the world, like the Jerry section of game. Yeah, right. There are also stories in the Bible where God invites the divine council to participate in making a decision, like when they helped decide how to bring down the corrupt Israelite king Ahad, or the joke, where they debate God's policy of rewarding people who do good.
So they're like a staff team, but why does God need that team? If he's powerful enough to create the whole universe, he could truly rule it if that helped.
Well, he doesn't need them, but apparently, the God of the Bible wants to share authority with others.
Oh, right. God shares to rule with human partners on earth, and so in the same way, there's a parallel story of God sharing his authority to rule with spiritual partners.
Yes, that is, until it all falls apart, you need twin rebellion. So you have humans who want to rule on earth on their own terms, so they start building their own nation using their own definitions of good and evil.
You have a famous story of the building of Babylon.
But check this out, when biblical authors like Moses or Isaiah looked back at the origins of Babylon, they saw more than just a human rebellion, but also a spiritual rebellion.
What was this spiritual rebellion?
Well, there were members of the divine council who, like humans, didn't want to represent God's authority anymore, they wanted to be God and make rebellion. And so these creative beings deceived humans into worshiping them instead of the creator. And so Babylon becomes the biblical image for the combined human and spiritual rebellion.
And so God gathers people from Babylon into different nations.
And in the book of Deuteronomy, Moses says, "This is when God also scattered the rebels of the divine council with them."
So the nations are handed over to spiritual rulers.
Yes, and this is why, when the biblical prophets look out at the violent empires of their day, they see two dimensions to all the chaos and injustice, human rebels who are being corrupted by the worship of spiritual rebels, the idol gods of money, sex, and military power.
Yeah, when humans give their allegiance to these powers, it leads to a world like ours.
Right, and the best example of this is the story of the exodus, where we're told that the Egyptian genocide of the Israelites was inspired by Pharaoh and by the gods of Egypt.
That's really intense.
But it's not the end of the story. When God rescued the Israelites from Egypt and its gods, he invited them to become his covenant partners and learn a different way of ruling the world.
And they agreed to it, but in the end, they don't honor partnership, they give their allegiance to other gods.
And so this leads to their exile in Babylon, where they become slaves once again to a foreign nation and their spiritual rulers, awaiting a new exodus in freedom. And this is where the story of Jesus comes up. He said he was here to rescue the world and take it back from the rebels.
Which rebels? The human ones? The human ones or the spiritual ones?
Exactly. For Jesus, it was all condemned. When he marched into Jerusalem for Passover, he was announcing the ultimate exodus. He was there to confront and overcome all rebel powers and authorities, and he did it by giving them his life.
So this is what the apostle Paul meant when he said that Jesus disarmed the powers and authorities, trying to break open that Bible's promise.
Yes, Jesus condemned our evil by allowing the rebels to unleash all the hateful evil on them. But then he overcame it with the power of his love and resurrection life. And then Jesus told his followers that all authority in heaven and earth now belongs to him.
That the ultimate human and divine partner. This is really good news.
Yeah, and it's why the apostles started inviting everyone to give their allegiance to the risen Jesus, to discover freedom and a new way to be human.
Now, while Jesus gained a decisive victory over the rebel powers, he didn't destroy them. There's still a realm causing problems.
Yes, and in fact, they are the problem. The apostles said that humanity's real enemy is never another human. Rather, it's the spiritual powers that animate our cultural idols that inspire hatred, division, violence.
That's when I see people hurting other people, I'm like, is the divine council gone broke? How do you deal with this kind of enemy?
Well, the apostle Paul said we can resist by putting on the character traits of Jesus like harm, faithfulness, justice, peace. And he said that our only weapon is the word of God, that is, the biblical story of good news, that Jesus has overcome all rebels with the divine power of his life and love.
Isn't that a great summary? They do some great work. So N.T. Wright, who is a former bishop of Anglin Church in England, says this. "The opening chapters of Genesis portrayed the creation of heaven and earth as a construction of a temple. Creation is built like a temple in seven stages, and the final element is the image, reflecting the divine presence of the world and channeling worship from creation back to the creator. A temple was designed as a place where heaven and earth would come together and would overlap and interlock together." Now, this is kind of a big theme, and we're not gonna go deep dive on this soon. What we have to recognize is, is what man has done is always tried to connect with God through this idea. But God himself created an idea. So for instance, when we go to the temple or the tabernacle first, the tabernacle of God, we're just gonna stick on two things here from the Genesis story. One, we're gonna talk about cherubim. So remember, the cherubim were placed at the Garden of Eden in order to protect the tree of life. So the cherubim were placed at the entrance of Eden to guard the way. The tabernacle, the ark of the covenant, has one on top? Two cherubim, right? Pacing one another in that. And then in the temple, the temple also contained a large carved cherubim that represented access from God and his divine presence. Okay, so there's one of these things, these images, these ideas, that are both physical and spiritual, both connected at the same time that God created. Now, the second issue we look at is that Eden is a sacred space, right? This is the presence of God, where he's walking with his people. It is holy ground. Eden is viewed as a sacred space, divine and human. The tabernacle was a portable dwelling for God among his people. Remember, we have the big pillar, turns to a giant nightlight, right, and then back again. But literally, remember we talked about last week? All their tents opened up to the centrality of God at the tabernacle in the middle. And then the temple is a fixed sacred space that replaced the tabernacle, representing God's presence. So you remember, so where did the people go at the time of Jesus to worship? They go to the temple, and the temple is filled with imagery, but it is where they consider the presence of God. By the way, why is there fighting in Israel about a certain space and land? It's all because of the mountain, right? And currently, the Muslims ruled the mountain, that's where Temple Rock is, okay, right? And the Jews want that back, because that's where the temple was, God's presence was. Except the Jews missed the story, right? That there was this other guy named Jesus, and now his presence is inside of us. Okay, so we're gonna take a moment for Christ in the tabernacle. So this presence of Christ in us. So all speaks of the person, nature, and characteristic of Christ. Now, I do a whole big lecture thing on the tabernacle, but we're gonna stick, we're gonna just pick on one part, and this is in the Holy of Holies. So in the Holy of Holies, so the time of the tabernacle, they're picking it up and carrying it forward, is the Ark of the Covenant. Now, the Ark of the Covenant is made out of acacia wood and of gold. The wood represents the humanity of God, Christ, and the gold represents what is divine, and both of them come together. And remember, this is the presence and the power of God in the midst of his people. Remember, when other armies saw the Ark of the Covenant come in, they would get scared because they had heard about the power of God. There is blood sprinkled on it every year by the high priest. And then manna inside, there's a little jar of manna, right? And it represents the bread of life, which is Christ. There is Aaron's rod. Remember Aaron's rod? And it was dead, and it came back to life, and it made almonds, form of the resurrection. And, I don't know, maybe some publicity for the almond people out in California. I don't know. I like them. And then, maybe it's right there, a superfood, I don't know. Anyway, and then the Ten Commandments, the version, the second version of the Ten Commandments, which is the revealed word of God. Now, what I'm telling you this is, this is both what is physical and what is spiritual all at the same time. Right? John 1:14. "And the word became flesh, and dwelt among us," both spiritual and physical, coming together in the same space. Now, let's go back to Genesis three, let's go back to the snake, right? So in this, there is, he is called the beast of the fields. He talks. He literally talks to them. He understands God's grace, apparently. He tells Eve, "You can become like..." Now, the word here, remember we talked about this last week, word. It's not in your mind, God, it's like God, it's Elohim. "You can be like one of these spiritual beings who knows what, what is good and what is evil." So he's saying, "You can be like these other beings that are here, you can be like them." Now, what's interesting here is Satan as a name for who this person is is not named until Revelation. For thousands of years, this person is called the accuser. And if you look in your Bibles, we talked about this last week, I hope some of you guys did that. When you look in these texts and you look up the word that talks about Satan or someone who's evil, look at your footnotes at the bottom, and it'll say like, "The Accuser" or "The Temptor." Okay, same happens, by the way, which we'll get to next week in the book of Job. Right? You and I grew up with this as Satan, but it doesn't say that. All right? Now, we also find out that he is cursed to the ground and actually under the ground in the underworld. So the Hebrew understanding of this is, remember, so this snake actually had wings. We're gonna get to that as a whole other story. Had wings and legs, because you're like, how many snakes are here that have legs, right? They don't have that. So God curses them and takes away what they had had as an Elohim, takes that away from him, and actually curses him to the ground. And the word there literally means like over the underworld, like where people die. And he's in charge of that, okay? So from a Hebrew perspective, that's how they saw that. Now, Heiser, who we mentioned last week, we've taken a lot of our stuff from him. Heiser emphasizes the importance of understanding Satan within the context of the entire biblical narrative. He believes that many traditional views of Satan are influenced by cultural interpretations rather than a careful reading of scripture. Heiser points out that Satan, from the word satan, means adversary or accuser. It's not just a name, but a title that refers to a specific role, typically an accuser or an adversary in heavenly court settings. And so last week, we talked about that, that many times he is called the satan. But again, that's a transliteration that we make the word Satan. It actually means accuser, or it means adversary. You with me? So when people for thousands of years read that, they did not read this as someone named Satan. They read it as, oh, he is one of the Elohim, he is one of the accusers, he is one of the adversaries. Okay, and that's important to know in understanding this, of the spiritual part of who this is. Now, two seconds on the Septuagint, because we mentioned it last week, and we're gonna come back to it in two sessions. The Septuagint is a Greek translation of the Bible. Now, the reason why we mention this is last week I said some of our Bibles were heavily influenced in the translation or Hebrew into Greek. And this happened after 300 B.C. because Alexander the Great had conquered the whole world, and the whole world learned Greek, okay? So for those of us who went to Bible college and took Greek, we took what was called Koine Greek, which was common Greek. And that is what the whole, pretty much anywhere you could go, and everyone at least would have an understanding of Koine Greek. You with me? Now, why is that important? We'll get to that when we get to New Testament. Here's why it's important. Because when Jesus comes and he spreads the word, and they're speaking in Koine Greek, guess how far you can spread the message? All over. It was part of the ways that God had prepared the world for the message of Christ. Okay. Now, I'm gonna talk about there are potentially three rebellions that happened in the first 11 chapters of Genesis. The first one we know well, Genesis three. Adam and Eve, right? Adam and Eve rebel against God. The snake rebels against God at that time. And so, and then they are all three, including the earth, are cursed at that time. Now, the second rebellion happens in a really weird passage in Genesis six. Now, when I taught freshmen in high school, and we come to Genesis six, the kids were like, "What is that?" And so I would give them a couple theories on that, but we're gonna talk about that just for a minute. So here, I'm gonna read it for you. "The sons of God saw that the daughters of men were attracted, and they took their as wives any ones they chose. Then the Lord said, 'My spirit shall not abide in man wherever, for he is flesh, and his day shall be 120 years.' Then Nepheleim were on the earth in those days, and also afterward, when the sons of God came into the daughters of man, and they bore children to them. These were the mighty men who were old, the men of renown.'" Okay, now this is weird, okay? So the Elohim, who were, remember last week, we talked about the divine council. The spiritually, remember, Eden and the earth are together, yeah, these Elohim. So after the fall, they have this. So the Elohim rebelled, some of them rebelled against God and had relationships with women. Their children were these Nepheleim, okay? Now later, they have also different names, we talked about last week, like the people of Anak, A-N-A-K. So when the children of Israel go into the promised land, they said, what'd they say? "There are giants there." And those are part of the Nepheleim. And we talked about Goliath last week. Goliath and his brothers were the sons of Gath, they were from Gath. And they were these giants, these men of renown. And so that's where these Nepheleim came from. And they became, because they were big and strong and wiser than the humans, they became leaders on earth. And so we have these men, large men of renown. Now, the third rebellion, as we saw in the video, comes in Genesis 11. We call it the Tower of Battle. So I quote a little bit here for you. "Come, let us go down, therefore confuse their language, so that they may not understand one another's speech. So the Lord dispersed them from there all over the face of the earth, and they left off the building, the city. Therefore its name was called Battle, because there the Lord confused the language of the earth, and from the Lord dispersed them all over the face of the earth." Deuteronomy 32 helps us understand that every nation was placed under the authority, well, they didn't start out as corrupt, but of these Elohim. So if you remember that little part of the video, after Battle breaks up, and all of a sudden they have like these little, like stars or something, like plus symbols, and they had all these little cities, and then each of those plus symbols come over them. Because, and this is a part of what we talked about last week, the geographic warfare. And we talked about Daniel 10, which we get to next week, which in Daniel 10 talks about, remember? So Daniel's praying, and his answer isn't coming, and the angel finally shows up and says, "I've got your message. Sorry I'm late. I was fighting the prince of Persia." Well, that's where this starts, are in each of these kingdoms. And then next week, so we're gonna talk about Egypt next week, and we're gonna talk about Babylon, and we're gonna talk about these different geographical Elohim. Now, side note for a moment. Even the Bible Project guys are talking about how who God is. God can make all the decisions and knows everything, but he chooses, this is kind of cool. He chooses to have this divine council to help make decisions and do things. That's what we find in Job one and two. Again, we'll talk about that next week. With Job one and two, talking about this divine council, right? Where have you been? I've been wandering to and fro on the earth, right? Now, I'm gonna relate this to another story. Do you remember when Moses first gets the children of Israel? He's got about two million people. And he has his father-in-law, who is a mini-anite priest, his name is Jethro. And all of a sudden, we get images in our head of what a Jethro looks like, right? We know that, so Jethro. Now, what I would teach this year ago, and learn, it kind of frustrated me because Moses was overwhelmed with all the people and stuff. And what did Jethro tell Moses to do? "Break five leaders who are led by the Spirit and who are wise, set them apart, and put them over fifties and hundreds." And let then Moses help you to help the people, like to take care of any of these problems. And I was always bothered by that. I'm like, well, can't Moses just do it or whatever? And I was like, oh, wait a second. This is a mirror. This is what God does, right? And guess who else he does this with? You and I. Isn't that insane? I can't be trusted with a PowerPoint. Why would he be anything else? Isn't that just crazy? That is the heart of God. Isn't that amazing? So Seth, in his teachings, is talking about the calling, right? Each you and I have been called by God to be a part of God's family, and we all have stuff to do. How cool is that, right? This is a part of the nature of God, both physical and spiritual, coming together. Now, God leaves Israel for himself, but we'll come to that. Okay, now, practicing confession. So I told you at the end of each session, I wanted to give you one type of a spiritual discipline to work on. Last week was prayer, this week is confession. Why? Because we talked about Genesis three, and we talked about rebellion. And guess what? I'm pretty sure everyone in here has a little bit of rebellion in them. All of us have that little two-year-old who wants to look up to God and go, "No!" Am I the only one? Nah, I don't think so. We all have that, right? So that little Romans book, you know, all the sin, the fall short, the glory of God. We all have that little guts. Therefore, if that is true, which of course it is, confession. So Richard Foster in his book Celebration of Discipline says this. Foster encouraged his individuals to incorporate confession into their regular spiritual practices. He stresses the importance of setting aside time for self-examination and reflection, fostering an attitude of openness and honesty toward God. Now, I believe one of the beautiful doctrines within the Christian church is that we take communion every week. I love that, and I've been to churches that don't do that, and I miss having communion every week. Well, part of communion, 1 Corinthians, chapter 11, says, "As you take..." Well, part of communion, 1 Corinthians chapter 11, says, "As you take," Paul says, "examine yourself." So maybe think about that today as you take communion. Think about that we need to examine, and for something we need to confess, or to make right to someone, we need to do that. Second is restoration and reconciliation. The ultimate goal of confession is restoration, not just to hear, to clear one's conscience, but to mend a broken relationship and grow closer to God. Through confession, believers can discover a deeper intimacy with God and a renewed sense of purpose. All right. Now, that was really quick. Let me make a summary. So you will walk away from the day, here it is. There is this amazing spiritual realm that was before we were ever created. And out of nothing, God created something. And the world and earth is all part of God's creation. And there's this spiritual realm and the physical realm that through the whole story of God has been intermingled and connected. And then fortunately, God has also given us and the Elohim free will, and we can rebel. And so God's story is, "I create, you rebel, I love you well and come alongside you and restore you, and I give you hope." Does that sound good? Yeah. All right, any questions? We'll take a few minutes for questions.
When you say Elohim.
Yes.
Okay, I'm a little confused.
Yeah.
I think that is that scripture of God.
Yeah, so Elohim are any spiritual beings in the spiritual realm can be called an Elohim. So it's, think of it as gods of the little gene. So I skipped the long part today, but even in Corinthians, when Paul is dealing with the gods of the Greeks, right? And so the idols and what they worship also represent spiritual entities, and those are the Elohim. It's a great question. It's hard to wrestle with them, though. But when we read in our bibles that, well, many times when we go down, it'll say Elohim. And so that word L means God, and we talked about that last week. So anything in the spiritual realm, including sometimes angels, are called Elohim. Yeah, so it's just a reframing, but it's any of these spiritual beings. So the elders sitting around the throne of God that we read about in Revelation would be considered also Elohim.
So they could be even good?
Correct. Yep. So they were all good. And then some of the Elohim rebelled against God. And some of, and then they were then, and some of those that were over countries in that, who started out as good. And then they became corrupted. Because as the video said, they want to be equal with God, right? So isn't that interesting? When that Elohim talks to Eve, and he says, what does he say? "You too can be like God." That was his own temptation as well, correct? That Eve wants to have the power and authority of Yahweh, who is the chief Elohim. And so when it says, "Lord of lords," that's what that means. Isn't that cool? I know it's a whole new reframing of all that. Okay, and, yes?
What's the title of the Bible Project video?
Of this one?
Yeah.
If you just type in Bible Project, Spiritual Beings. It's about, I think it's about six videos that you can watch. It's very helpful. Anything on Bible Project, standard approval. Those guys are awesome. So, and they, so again, they have a podcast. Each of them are about an hour long. It's him and John talking. And they, they do long versions of all this. You could also listen, take a deeper dive on that. And they have the videos, and then they always have like college classes available, thought-free. So, and people, like millions of people around the world, like, listen every week. Okay, any other questions? Oh, sorry, yes.
Sometimes just sitting here listening to the video, it seems like, we're grounded, it seems like God created us, he knew that here on earth, where we were born, coming through, and back over, that we would rebel. And he loved us so much, and that, when he's ready, as our lives proceed, and when he's ready, I think it's just so awesome, and that, he comes alongside, and he gives him to look, and he calls on him, and he causes hope to be with him. And throughout the journey of what we call life here on earth, that's the Lord. There are differences, there are bad times, and as we rebel, and he loves us so much that, because his heart is so full of love for each of us, that he just causes hope to our eternal hope, and there, we will be forever and ever.
It's an amazing story, isn't it? And it's true. So when you're talking, thinking of Philippians chapter 2, which for me is like one of the most beautiful, Philippians 2:1 through 11, that Christ did not consider equality with God something to hold on to, but he emptied himself and became a man. And not just a man, he became a servant. And not just a servant, but then he died on the cross, so that every knee will bow and every tongue confess that he is what? Lord of, he is the head Elohim of the Elohim, right? That he is the son of God, and why? Because he loves us. That's just, that's two over one, right? If someone, if a God would do that for you and I, and that's the beauty of the story, right? Okay, one more question, if you might have. Yes, sir.
Yeah, we're talking about the Tower of Babel.
Yeah.
In the confusion, most of the people dispersed with all their languages. That's an extension of that. Would that be in the Muslim countries around Israel?
All countries.
Today?
All countries. So, good question. So he's asking the Tower of Babel and about what happened. So at that moment is, and I believe the number is, theologians have come up, which is really cool, by the way, comes up to 70, all right? So numbers, remember when Shane Wood, if you guys heard Shane Wood, numbers mean something. So, they believed that there were 70 different groups that came out of Babel. And so those were the separate, 70 different people groups that all spread, basically found themselves. When I used to teach this, I would have the kids get up, and each of them, like, give them a different color. And they had red, and green, and blue, and purple, and they all had to yell them out loud, so that they'd find each other. Because that was probably what it was like on the Tower of Babel, right? They're all speaking a different language, trying to find someone who speaks their language. Now, here's the beauty of the part. Acts chapter 2. Acts chapter 2, remember what happens? Who's all in Jerusalem? It's not just Jewish people. People from all over, and what does scripture say? How many nations? Seventy. It is a part, I'm just like, it is a part of God's redemption. Remember, he is always heading towards restoration and for ends of everything coming together. It is God's call to his people around the world to come back home. Isn't that amazing? That is so cool. So all those different people groups are all the different people groups. And where all they scattered at that time, which we even know today, right? Basically, look, all over Europe, and all over Asia, and Africa, the known world at that time. That's where those people all scattered to. And so approximately 70 different people groups. And that's what we have today, or probably where we all come from that. Isn't that crazy? Pretty cool. All right, well, thank you all so much for coming, and thank you for your interest in this. Again, I know we're flying by fast, and if you have questions, think of them during the week. Bring them to the question time. All right, next week is Old Testament, and so we're going to do some big battles next week with all that.